Clerk Seegrist, can you please take roll call?
Foster.
Good evening.
Borninsky.
Good evening.
Like trustee Ganguly is not in attendance. Graham Hudek.
Evening.
The record reflect clerk Seegrist is in attendance. Slavens.
Good evening.
Snyderman.
Hello, I'm here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with addition of item G zero, consider creating and filling a public safety operations manager position?
So moved.
By clerk Seegrist, supported by treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from November 22nd and 29th and December 6th, 2022?
So moved.
Support.
By clerk Seegrist, supported by trustee Borninsky. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Okay, public comment on agenda items only. Let me pull this up to see if anyone's online. We have zero attendees online. So anyone in the audience would like a public comment? No public comment. Uh, no public comment. Case. No public comment is over. Next item on the agenda is payment of the bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by clerk Seegrist, supported by treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Next item is our some closed sessions. Update on union negotiations and discussion to consider purchase or lease of real property.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move that the board go into closed session for um the purposes of discussing um for an update on union negotiations and the discussion to consider purchase or sale of real property.
Support. By clerk Seegrist, supported by trustee Borninsky. Can we please have a roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seegrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Okay, we will be back uh soon and off to closed session. Hello, everyone. Um, can I please have a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by clerk Seegrist, supported by trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Next item we have on the agenda are recognitions. Um, promotion recognition. Chief Chad, do you want to read it or would you want to read it at the podium? Sure. For the zoom, uh-oh. Trevor, we can't see the zoom on the screens, just to let you know. He's in the back room. Oh, we, I can see it here but not on the screens. Just to let you know, Greg can't leave your services. The screen went off. Oh, there's Trevor. You can start reading though, I think. Oh, you don't have it? Okay, then I will read it, I guess. Come on. Sure. Cause I'm blank.
Ma'am Supervisor, I would like to read um, or I move that the board approve the following resolution recognizing, whoa. I actually don't. Okay, never mind.
Screens went off, just to let you know.
I would like to read a recognition. Adam Schulman is being recognized tonight for his promotion to the rank of lieutenant with the Canton Police Department. Adam was hired by the department as a police officer in 2007. He was promoted to the rank of sergeant in 2018. In his new position as lieutenant, Adam will serve as a platoon shift commander in the patrol division overseeing the daily operations of his assigned shifts consisting of sergeants, patrol officers, and PSSOs. In addition, he will be responsible for providing direction, motivation, and training of subordinate personnel working toward the accomplishment of the department's established goals and objectives. Adam is joining tonight by friends and family, including his wife, Ally, and their sons Cameron and Connor. Congratulations, Lieutenant Schulman.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, you already had the swearing in, just to let you know. We did do the swearing in. Chad, would you like to say a few words?
Uh, thank you. I just uh, this is a special promotion for me, just like they all are, but just a little background. Fifteen years ago, he got into a squad car with one of the most quirky guys that Canton Township ever hired, which is me. And we had a blast. And from that point, um, from his history with his father, which probably motivated him to this field, it's been exceptional to watch his career grow and finally get here to get promoted to a well-deserved rank. So, thank you. Thank you.
Very much. Would you like to come up to the front here with your family and we'll take a picture?
Still gonna miss working with you.
Congratulations.
Alright. We'll stand behind you so we can tell. Behind you.
Come on, Chad.
First time calling him Adam.
Who does? Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a resolution recognizing retirement of deputy police chief Craig Wilshire, who I do not believe is here, but we're going to read his resolution.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution recognizing the retirement of deputy police chief Craig Wilshire. Whereas Canton Police, would you like, would you want to read the resolution?
Oh. Sure, okay, yeah. And then you can make the motion? Go ahead.
Whereas Canton Police Department recognizes the importance of its employees. Whereas in 1998, Craig Wilshire was hired as a police officer for the Canton Police Department. Following his first promotion to sergeant, he rapidly advanced through the ranks of lieutenant and deputy chief in just over eight years. Whereas early in his career, Craig served as a road patrol officer, primarily responsible for responding to calls for service in the community. He took on several special assignments, including that of investigator in the detective bureau as a command officer. He was responsible for his assigned platoon in the patrol division and was selected for special assignments as the detective bureau supervisor and the special services lieutenant. Whereas for the, for the past eight years, he has been designated as the department's accreditation manager tasked with fulfilling and maintaining the highest standards in policing under the International Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, Kalia. Whereas in his role as deputy chief, Craig led the department's patrol investigative and support services divisions consisting of over a hundred full-time sworn and non-sworn personnel. He also assisted the director of police services with the development and implementation of the department's budget policies, procedures, special projects, and internal affairs. Whereas throughout his career, Craig was proactive in developing personnel and programs that embrace growth within the department. He has been an integral in the creation and advancement of many progressive policy policing initiatives, including the department's body worn camera system, employee well-being programs, the embedded social worker program, and the Coalition for Inclusive Communities. Whereas simultaneous to his remarkable career, Craig continued to further his education, earning two master's degrees from both Madonna University and Eastern Michigan University, attended Eastern Michigan University's Police Staff and Command School, and graduated from the prestigious FBI National Academy Session 265. Whereas Craig has maintained the highest level of professionalism in every aspect of his service, of his service with Canton, focused on continual improvements with him, within himself, the department, and the community. He so proudly served for 24 years. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton is appreciative of the commitment to excellent service as demonstrated by police, by deputy police chief Craig Wilshire. And further resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton does, upon does hereby recognize Craig Wilshire for his commendable contribution to the Canton community and the Canton Police Department.
Motion made by clerk Seegrist, supported by trustee Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Resolution passes. Thank you. Congratulations, Craig Wilshire. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by our youth advisory committee.
Hello, my name is Mon Cicon. I'm a board member on the Youth Advisory Council. Uh, I will be providing to you a report of Yak's business throughout the months of November and December. Starting with Yak's board elections, an executive board was successfully implemented during November. Moving on, during Yak's November meeting, we had students from Grand Valley University come in to introduce the Q GSI system. This program can support our youth needs assessment data to better serve Canton's youth. Pertaining to the youth program evaluation, Yak will set a distribution plan for the program evaluation during our January meeting. We've also had the opportunity to present the assessment and its implementation during March at the M Parks Conference. During December, Yak's members toured the spaces to be redesigned for the block center. We plan on implementing our new designs December 27th. Finally, our first DEI board was made in November, which highlighted Veterans Day. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them down.
Thank you for your report. We appreciate it. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Just uh, nice to meet you. Congratulations, and we look forward to hearing from you throughout the year.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a communications assessment summary. Um, now we don't have, we, we can see on our screens, so they would still be on, but we don't see it on the side screen. So Kristin and Peg, are you? Oh, there we go. Wait. Let me do the. All you have to do is turn on your camera there.
I don't know if you can hear me, but we've lost sound and, and video.
Can you hear me, Gina? No, she can't.
Write something in the chat.
Yeah, I don't know if we have, that's an issue. We don't have a chat. Kristin, do you have her phone number? Thanks. Thank you. You're having some technical difficulties. She can't hear. G zero. Oh. Gina, can you hear us now? You are on mute.
Yes, I can hear you now.
I'll find it.
Great, thank you.
I'll turn my camera back on. Would you like me to share and see if we can see our screen?
Sure. Kristin, would you like to introduce them or?
So we've got um Gina DePinto and is Samantha, is, is she on line two?
Samantha's online.
Okay.
I am. I'm here.
Um, they are from Raftellus and we contracted with them a few months ago to perform a communications assessment um to kind of evaluate the communications efforts throughout the township. And um, they did a series of interviews. They interviewed all of you, all of our directors. They did focus groups, they did surveys, they did um benchmarking on other communities. And um, so I think they, they were able to evaluate. They, they looked at all the stuff that we produce um, and they're just here to present their findings. So, take it away ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and to address the board. Uh, I know we're having some technical difficulties, so hopefully we'll get through this, and I know that you're running behind, so I'm gonna try and go pretty fast, but if I get going too fast or you have questions, don't hesitate to tell me to slow down or certainly ask questions. As uh Kristin said, I'm Gina DePinto. I'm with the Raftellus Strategic Communications Practice and led this project as project manager. And of course, I'm joined by my colleague and senior manager Samantha Viegas. Um, let's see. If I can get my mouse working, talk about technical difficulties. So in August, we were contracted, as Kristin said, to conduct a communications assessment of your external communications program. Uh, you all should be very familiar with Raftellus as our firm conducted the organizational assessment last year. Um, we have presented a pretty extensive comprehensive report, fifty-five pages. So tonight, we are not gonna go through fifty-five pages. I'm gonna stay high level. And you can see we're just go through our seven-point checkup, uh, which is essentially how, what guides our assessment, and I'll go through that, what those seven points are, our findings and some key recommendations. So basically, how did we conduct the assessment? Um, we use our own seven-point checkup, um, really to see how everything is working, where, what's working well, where are opportunities for enhancements or improvements. And then just to walk you through what those seven points are, first, we do an environmental scan. We look at the community, what's the economic drivers, organizational structure, things like that that may impact not only just the township government, but really how that interacts or impacts with your communications program. Next, we looked at, if you have a communication plan and if it's really being followed, it's your, your guiding document for all of your communications efforts, stakeholders, key messages. Um, we also, speaking of messaging, we could take the message. Um, is it consistent? Is it, is it hitting all the right points? Is it conveying all the message? Is it consistent across all of the different um, uh, products that you, you know, all your communication channels and all of your messaging, all your documents, all the communications that you, that you use? Um, of course, we review the materials, which includes everything from like your website to flyers, brochures, social media, all of your messaging. Next, we did a media audit. We look at traditional media and social media. You know, how is the outreach to your media? Are those messages being heard? What is the coverage in print and broadcast media? For social media, we look at the channels that you're using, what kind of messaging, uh, what's your engagement? Uh, are you reaching all the right intended audiences with the right messages at the right time? Next, we look at your internal capacity, which is really about your staffing, your structure, your funding of your communications. And lastly, we do external research to validate the efforts. Um, Kristin touched on this. The things that we do to um, to look at those external research, we interviewed your key internal and external stakeholders. We conducted two focus groups. We benchmarked three cities, uh, what their communications program is like. Um, it was, and we'll get into it, but it was Ann Arbor, Livonia, and Shelby Township. Um, and then, of course, we did a community survey. So what did we find? Um, I've grouped the findings in these three major categories of environment, your staffing systems and structure and capacity, and then your materials, messaging, and the communication channels that you use. So first, just high level on, on the environment. The really great news is, in this environment of public distrust, Canton Township has very high public trust, and you are seen as very transparent. Let me just say that's a great place to start because many municipalities and local governments don't have, don't have that. It's a very high level on everything that we saw from not only throughout the, the interviews and the survey results. So that's, that was really a great thing to see. Also, everyone without fail commented on what a great community Canton is. There's so many recreational opportunities, um, good schools, highly educated population. But you know, the upside of some of that, which is great, it's, it is diversity and the, and the community is growing and, and, and it is diverse, but are all of the different groups being treated equally with special events and recognition? And of course, downside of growth is always more traffic, you know, there's, there's stressors on your infrastructure, there's road construction. And you know, it goes without saying when, when there's growth, but that is, you know, traffic and road construction are some of the um reasons for most of the complaints and calls to the township. Huge misunderstanding about the township form of government. There's confusion about local government, are you a city, you know, what, what programs and services are county, what are township? So there's a lot of communication and disconnect, I think, with the residents um about the township. Lack of awareness about some of those programs and services that you offer, and especially I heard loud and clear about the award-winning and nationally recognized programs. And it's really a point of pride for the township, and so I think even the, the staff in those different programs and departments would love for there to be more awareness, um, just about the level of, of skill and staffing that you have there. And then we also heard from the business community. Uh, they want more support when they're opening businesses, um, and they also want an easier development process. So it's easier to understand really how to develop and open a business in Canton. Excuse me, I feel like I have a frog in my throat. Next, on your staffing, uh, systems, structure, and capacity. Um, as you know, communications is coordinated through the supervisor's office. And when we, when we talk about the communications team, we're primarily focused on the four leads. Uh, of course, you know, Kristin is the communications manager in the supervisor's office, but she's supported with um communications efforts in public safety, municipal services, and leisure services. Leisure services does have a marketing plan, but it also has revenue-driven programs, so it's somewhat easier to justify. Um, perhaps that's the reason, but the overall communications does lack a comprehensive communications plan. The other thing that you're lacking are board adopted policies such as social media policies, brand identity standards. These things would certainly help a guide, not only the communications team, but so that all employees really know process, you know, for messaging and spokespeople and um all those, the official communications. Your staff, you should be very proud of your staff. You have a very highly skilled communication staff. They know what they're doing. But I think one of the things that they might even admit that they lack is someone really focused on social media and digital communications, more video, more imagery, more infographics. And certainly with the thousands of messages that people are hit with every single day, we always recommend more visuals, simplicity, video, because it's more engaging and gets people's attention. Uh, too much text and people just, you know, pass it by and skip right past it. Uh, the benchmark study that I mentioned, Ann Arbor, Livonia, and Shelby Township, especially Ann Arbor and Livonia, they are, their budget is probably twice that of Canton's. Um, but recognizing that their government access TV staffing is included in those budgets, but you're, you're definitely under resourced compared to these other programs. And then really of note is of the four members of the team that, um, of course, there is some support in leisure services and public safety, but of those four communication leads, only one of them is a hundred percent dedicated to communications and marketing. The communications manager, for example, is also the economic development manager, and those used to be separate roles, um, pre-recession. Um, and so those are two full-time jobs being basically handled, overseen by one person. Findings about your messaging materials and channels, uh, Focus Newsletter and Discover brochure are trusted sources of information. Uh, everyone is very familiar with both of these publications. They're heavily relied upon, and you're reaching a majority of your population. Keep going on those, basically. Um, there are certainly things that can be done to enhance them, but everybody knows what those two are. Website is, what we heard from many is that it's hard to navigate and text-heavy. Now, we understand that the website is going to be redesigned um here very soon. So um, some things and some tactics that we included in the, in the report would be considered hopefully for that redesign. Uh, we found pretty much across the board, a lack of awareness about the other newsletters, um, as well as the Board of Trustee agendas and meetings. And so again, there's a disconnect in the community with their local government, and the emphasis is very heavy on recreation, which is really, really nice, and it's a great part of what you offer. But I think we're missing really that people understand their local government and what it is that you do for them. Um, and per capita, very few people are following your social media pages. So really quickly on recommendations, especially with staffing. I won't go through these necessarily bullet by bullet, but first off, you need some board adopt, some policies that at least the board can consider. And I mentioned those, a social media policy, brand identity standards. Um, next, you definitely need a strategic communications plan. Uh, we, we recommend that those two positions of communications manager and economic development manager be separated. And then there needs to be more support. So whether you still keep economic development in the supervisor's office, but maybe there's additional support for both communications manager and economic development. And/or a full-time social media coordinator or a, or a communication specialist that can really help focus on those digital communications. Uh, you know, video production these days doesn't have to cost thousands of dollars and have special producers. There's so much software and technology out there and skill set in our up-and-coming, you know, junior-level staff who know how to do all of those things. Another, another key effort here, focus is um, I think there's definitely more that can be done on promoting the actions of the board. And really informing residents about their local government, what it is that you do for them, how they can get engaged and participate, and actually impact even the decision-making process. And so if there's more emphasis placed on what goes on at the board, it could be a, either a release, a press release after each meeting, or even just a quick sixty-second stand-up on video about what the board did at their meeting today, kind of thing. And put that on the social media, on the website, and start getting people really interested and engaged in what happens with the board. Next, on your messaging, part of a communications plan includes a message platform. It guides all your messaging. Um, in that way, you've got some consistency and that staff can actually refer back to each time they go to prepare or, or draft a new material, flyer, brochure, press release, whatever it is, that consistent language and messaging and your key talking points are, are consistently being used across all messaging and platforms. Uh, we already talked about, about the website. One of the ways to make it more engaging is probably less text and more info, uh, graphics, more images. Uh, and video. Um, I'm getting feedback on audio, so apologize if you catch me delaying. Another thing is with, um, because. Another thing is with, um, because you do have all the electronic newsletters, um, one thing is to really look at maybe where you can merge a few, um, that really don't have a big following, and there's, uh, relevant material that, um, you know, I think it would be easy to merge a few of them, but also that you need, you know, to help drive traffic back and forth from the newsletter to the website, and the website to the newsletters. Maybe have a higher profile for where people can, um, sign up for those. And there's a lot of really great information in them, but maybe too much that people aren't, some of the comments were that there was too much information, they couldn't get through it all. So I think there are ways and certainly tactics that we provided in the, in the assessment report to help engage and kind of navigate through all of that content. Another thing that we heard is, as much as people love focus, it may be time to just relook at design, colors, content, and, and promoting that again, even though it's mailed out to absolutely every address. Uh, some of the design might, might be time for a redesign, kind of a refresh, plus you have a, a lot of new residents, and so kind of need to get their attention again and have them reading cover to cover. And that is my really quick rundown of a 55-page report, but we're happy to answer any questions, and I hope I didn't go too fast through some of that.
Thank you. No, Kristen, Amy, um, Amy and Peg, do you want to add anything based on what you read or anything, any questions you had or comments? Any questions or comments from the board? Kate?
Just gonna, um, comment that I thought the report was really interesting, um, made a lot of good points, and also I thought, um, gave us some good news as well as things that we, um, probably need to work on.
Summer?
Um, just adding to what trustee Berninski said, I thought the report was really, um, comprehensive and, um, gave us a, a lot of things that we could do moving forward, but one of the things that I think came through is that the current communications team is doing a good job, they just need additional capacity and, um, board support, and so, um, I just wanted to make sure that we lifted that up as well.
Diane?
This was a very, excuse me, helpful, um, report. I appreciate it. Shows our strengths and our weaknesses, and so I think it's a, a good step as we move forward and, and change some things, tweak things, so.
Stephen?
Uh, yeah, thank you very much. My computer was in the shop the last two days, so I'm looking forward to reading it. Um, I'll take this weekend and, and read it. Um, uh, looking forward to us implementing a lot of these ideas or at least discussing them and deciding what's best for us. Uh, one question I did have is, you mentioned when you were talking about communicating board actions and what the board is doing these days and how it impacts our residents. Um, I, I know that we've always used press releases to get things out there, but how does the average person these days receive a press release? I mean, I know, I, with newspapers not showing up anymore and, uh, you know, I, I'm not sure we're hitting CNN.com or AP.com with what we're doing, and if, if we do, it's not actually something that we're actually happy about if we're hitting those. So, uh, how, how do, how does that reach our residents?
Of course, we can't rely on the press release anymore, and you know, we use that to inform media, but you go to where your audience is, uh, where they're getting information in the ways that they get it. So, you know, we have to tell our own story. We can't rely on the media, and I think that, you know, just a 60-second snapshot, for example, of what happened today at the board, um, is interesting and it's engaging, and it piques people's interest, and then you provide a link of where they can go get more information. So it's those short snapshots, and, and it builds awareness.
Yeah, that, that sounds like-
I think it's just a general lack of awareness.
That sounds like social media maybe to me, probably, yeah, in terms of how people receive small snippets of video and things like that or information, so, okay. Thank you very much.
And I don't know if, Samantha, I didn't give Samantha a chance to speak if you wanted to add anything. She was there for the focus groups in person, so.
I was just gonna amplify the recommendation that you made, Gina, about this idea of looking across all of your, um, potential channels, whether it's the social media, the earned media, your owned media, the Focus Newsletter, and if you take like, for example, the snippets of the board meeting results, you want to put them out across the breadth of your communications channels, knowing how your population is diverse in a number of ways, and where they go for information will vary from household to household. So if you're hitting them in all those places, then you improve your ability to make sure that more people see what, what, what's going on.
Yeah, and just to add to that, for example, you could have a monthly summary in the focus, since that goes out every month. There could be weekly quick videos on some of those other platforms, and you can use government access TV, can put those videos, um, on your YouTube channel. So there's different ways, and you kind of adjust it based on that, um, channel and the audience. Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, and like you said, this, so you gave a presentation, but of course, there's a report that the board received also, so, and Michael?
Yeah, the, thank you for the hard work, and thank you for everybody who participated, both from the community and in the township. Um, 60-page report, there's a lot of, of, of information in here. A lot of it was like intuitive. I was like, okay, yeah, for sure, I thought that, I felt that. Um, you know, some of it I did not, I'd never thought of at all, and it was really fascinating to see kind of what came out of the focus groups. Um, you know, like, some of it was like, hard to hear. I was like, you know, one of the logo ideas I really liked, everyone kind of poo-pooed, and I was like, oh, okay, I guess I'm an outlier on that one. So that was, it's, it's really fascinating. A lot of the recommendations seem, seem pretty awesome, actually. Um, and so what is abundantly clear is that we are working, working really hard, and, what I didn't hear when I read the report, or didn't, what didn't jump out at me when I read the report was, but what jumped out at me to, tonight, when we talked about it, is kind of how, um, our, our communications team is pulled in so many other different directions, and, and so i, 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 it does make sense that kind of like, okay, uh, other similarly sized communities are spending twice as much money on, on this effort. But additionally, like, how many things are residents missing out on because they just, they don't know about them, right? And so it is kind of like, it, what's important is kind of what we do with these recommendations and how we think about implementing them. And then what we do going, going forward, you know, some of the stuff was, was a little difficult, you know, difficult to hear, but some of the stuff is, is, is pretty good. So yeah, I, I really appreciated it, especially some of the helpful stuff I think will probably fit into the website redesign and things like that, which seems pretty good. But altogether, um, it made me really proud of, of kind of the work that we've done, the communications team has done up to this point, too. It was super cool to see the subscription levels on all of, all the newsletters and things like that, kind of getting into that, and some of the recommendations about like, you know, maybe you want to abandon inactive Twitter accounts and things like that. Just kind of was like, yeah, that makes, makes sense, so. Lot of, lot of information, lot to digest. It definitely gives us a lot to do, I think. There's a lot to, a lot to do, um, but good work.
Well, you're to be commended, your entire team. Um, the other thing that is so strong is recreation, and I don't think you get full credit for that either. You know, they go to the Village Theater, but do they know that that's actually a Canton Township, you know, owned and managed property, for example? But, you know, to build that relationship with all of your constituents, when times get tough, you want them to know you. You want them to know they can rely on you and trust in your guidance in case of emergencies or crisis or disaster. So it can't all be about fun and recreation, even though live, work, play, that's a great thing. So, so I do feel like that's a really important piece to build that relationship.
Thank you, and it's, as was said, you know, you, you said, you looked at our Twitter account and saw the low volume, and you, you know, basically said to look at abandoning that. Are you seeing that across, um, many municipalities, them going away from Twitter, or is it just ours because our traffic is low?
Sam, I don't know if you want to-
I'll, I'll say a few things about that because, um, so Twitter in particular, of late in particular, has taken a real downturn in terms of the, uh, quality of the content that's on there, and maybe, you know, the value of time spent there by a lot of folks, so. Um, but across the board, wherein we work with local governments, utilities, public works, all the types of groups that we work with, um, we see them trying to cover the breadth of the social media. They'll have Facebook, they'll have Twitter, they'll have Instagram even, um, so, you know, um, Nextdoor, of course, YouTube, and the problem is they're not well-sourced enough. They're underestimating and under-resourcing what it really takes to do those well, to re, really reach people in a human way, um, in a relatable way, in a relevant contextual way. And what we tell them is, you know what, it is way better to go deep on one than be shallow on several. So the advice here is, if you're not really reaching and connecting with people on Twitter, put your time into Facebook or Instagram. As Gina said, be where the people are, so do that work first to really understand, is, is everybody really still on Facebook? Has your, has your demographic, has your community moved on to TikTok? I mean, these are things that you've got to be aware of, and then be where they are, um, and put your effort there. The only time I feel like Twitter has value for a public entity is in an emergency situation. People are just starving for information, and so in a, in a crisis, you're going to have to have people that are manning all the platforms just to feed the beast, so to
You'd also mentioned, um, in your report, highlighting employee groups. That should be fun also, you know, using our cable channel to do that, so people get to meet our employees and what they do. It takes them to depth, kind of what you mentioned at the report. But you also talked about website examples. Can you give examples of communities that, you know, where you're seeing more clarity, basically, because you're saying our content should change up a little bit?
One of the things I will say, and I'll let, you know, Gina chime in with specific examples, is, you know, in the focus groups across the board, what we heard was, the website looks like it was created by a staff person with their own view of how they think the information should be structured, and that's common. We see that with, um, the local governments and utilities and public works groups that we work with all the time. Um, and what they're looking for is a website that's built with the, the constituents mindset in, in hand, in mind. So how do they think of your, your various programs and services? How would they be looking for that information? How would they be searching for it? And getting away from the website as a repository for everything you think they should know, and really thinking through, what is it that they want to know, and in what hierarchy do they want to know it?
Okay. Did you get any of that from the focus groups at all, that hierarchy?
I will have to look back at my notes specifically, but, um, you know, we can, um, we can give Kristen some sense of what we see working in other places, if that's helpful to you.
Sure.
Yeah, I didn't see anything more than just easier to navigate, couldn't find what they were looking for.
I think someone specifically referred to like, you know, having a calendar at the homepage. Um, and, and, um, that was the one thing that I think stood out to me as, you know, like, a very simple thing to, to do, but really kind of just rethinking, how is it experienced from the person coming into it as opposed to the person throwing the information
And your web developer, actually, because they do government websites across the country, they even have some really good examples of probably more modern design, what's been done in the last, you know, two years, for example, uh, with some different municipalities as far as maybe even before and after. So you can really kind of see how that there, they can help mold that, um, that whole navigation system, and, you know, where to focus on your landing pages and your homepage, and, and really what people are looking for. But Sam's right, most websites, you know, have a couple hundred pages of content that is outdated, broken links, people, you, you know, they're not going to, they're not going to dig that deep.
Summer?
Oh, she answered my question.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. And then also, you know, if you have any examples of a strategic communications plan to, to help kind of our, give us a template.
Tons of those and a template, for sure. Yep.
Great, thank you. Um, any comments or questions from the staff? Any other board members? All right, thank you very much. Thank you. We appreciate all the work, and I'm sure we'll have more questions to follow. Thank you for your help.
No worries. Thank you so much. Have a great evening. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to our communications team. Looks like you're packing up, so say thank you before you go. Thanks. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, let me get, sorry, I'm digging into the communications assessment. I move that the board approve the consent calendar as presented. I'm C1, request authorization to pay the bills in 2023 when no regular board meeting is scheduled. C2, consider payment of City View annual software maintenance fee. C3, consider approval of the Canton Township's stormwater standard operating procedures. C4, consider second reading and adoption of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Markham Rezoning. C5, consider approving and increase the blanket purchase order issued to the Michigan Humane Society. C6, consider request to increase public safety blanket purchase order for uniforms. C7, request for resolution of Lululele Body of Government to recognize PCS Bowling Boosters Club as a nonprofit in the community for purposes of making an application for a charitable gaming license to the Michigan Gaming Control Board. C8, consider 2023 meeting dates for the Commission for Culture, Arts, and Heritage.
Support.
Made by Clerk Seager, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. The next item is general calendar. Item G0 is consider creating and filling a public safety operations manager position.
Madam Supervisor, let me get down here. I move to approve a potential headcount increase with the creation and filling of a public safety operations manager position for a period not to exceed five years, that, with the maximum budget impact being $150,000 per year.
Motion made by Clerk Seager, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Police and Fire Department are requesting a new position of Public Safety Operations Manager be created and filled. This new job description and factor analysis of pay grade 10 was approved at the Merit Commission meeting held on November 9th, 2022. In addition, amendments to the 2023 Police and Fire Budget are included with this request. Um, so Chad, do you want to, I think Chris is online also, if you guys want to comment on that?
Uh, thank you for the time here today with, for the board to consider this, uh, opportunity for us to fill a position like this, as we try to meet one of the board goals and one of the goals that we have, um, internally in both the Police and Fireside is succession planning and preparing employees in the future. Uh, we see the person that could fill this position, some of the potential applicants could very much help us, uh, prepare for the future, because this position is so integral, um, into both the Police and Fireside as it relates to the states and the, uh, project management, uh, in, in the RBA where it talks about pro, uh, project management, procurement, purchasing, facility operations, you know, some of the payroll processing. This, this position is critical for our Police Department and Fire Department.
Russ?
Uh, I would just echo what Director Ball said. He's, um, he's nailed, hit the nail on the head. We both need this, uh, more than anyone knows, and it'll keep our operations, uh, running smooth for the next three years and, and get other people in place, uh, following, um, when this position ends or terminates. Um, so hopefully, we can fill it from internal here, and, uh, it'll be a very minimal budget adjustment for, uh, future years.
Right, oh, you're right, and that's, I should have read that part. The thought would be to temporarily, three to five years, create a position that would replace the current- be to temporarily, three to five years, create a position that would replace the current public safety business operations coordinator position, like you said, temporary. Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Next item, G1, consider authorization of a purchase order to Spalding De Decker and Associates Incorporated for professional engineering services for the 2023 Residential Road Improvement Program.
May I ask before we move on who the second was for G0? I didn't write that down. Was it Diane?
I've written down Diane.
Oh, I'm sorry. Treasurer Slavens. Did I say, you guys are throwing your voices again.
Thank you. Okay. My apologies for that. I just wanted to get that down. All right. So now we're at G1. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order contract for the 2023 Residential Road Improvement Projects to Spalding De Decker Associates Incorporated in the amount of $4,462,500 with a 5% contingency of $23,125 for a total of $485,625 and to approve the attached budget.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In 2018, Canton Township passed road millage and retained Spalding De Decker through a competitive bidding process to handle the residential program. SDA also serves as a program consultant. Canton Township has now successfully completed four years residential road millage projects with Spalding De Decker and based on their performance, engineering services recommended retaining SDA for design and construction engineering services for the 2023 residential program. Let me see, Jade. No, I'm sorry, Dave. Would you like to comment on that?
I don't have any additional comments, other than we're excited to get going for the next construction season. Also, there's other questions. Bill Surcek's here too, from Engineering Services.
Board questions or comments? Well, we had a successful roads program this year, so we know we'll have another one.
I've enjoyed driving on some smoother roads this year.
Right. That's right.
It's crazy that we're five years into this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fourth year of building of, you know.
You can feel, I mean, you can, and it's not all our work, but you, when you couple with the state and the county and our local road work, it's, I remember in 2016, I was talking to a gentleman in Sunflower, and he was upset about Warren Road. Because at that time, that stretch of Warren Road in front of Tonda was atrocious. And every time I drive down Warren, I always think of that gentleman and that conversation we had. And then I turn on to Canton Center, and it's like brand new, you know? And then I turn on to like Cherry Hill, and it's brand, and it's like, it's wild that like I can literally drive like three miles down road that has been improved since we took office. And to think about the state of our, of our roads, even six years ago to where they are today, it's just unbelievable. Unbelievable. It's really cool.
Yes. And we, our Pacer rating has also increased also currently. What is it now? What did it increase from?
By one.
By one?
Really? Wow.
What are we at now? Seven, is it?
I was like, seven?
Hopeful thinking.
I think the goal was to get to seven.
Seven, you're right.
Over 20 years.
You're right. You're right.
Summer, you may remember from our spending when years ago, it took the mafia 20 years to move on.
Yeah. Five years, you moved one point. Very good.
Great job.
Level of investment plus our investment encourages the state and the county to also invest, and so we're able to capitalize on that a little bit more.
Commitment.
So, yep. 15 more years to go, I guess.
Very good. Very good. Good job. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. That's great. Item G2, consider approval of the 2022 budget adjustments.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the attached listing of budget adjustments to the 2022 budget.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The township adopted the 2022 budget at the November 23, 2021 board meeting, and since then has made various amendments to it. At this time, I'm asking the board of trustees to approve the attached budget adjustments to the 2022 budget year. Description of the budget adjustments is explained on the attachments. Director Trumbo, do you want to add anything?
Sure. I will just go over a couple of the highlights. Really, these, the majority of these are just some bookkeeping items and various departments where maybe a little bit more money was needed here or there. There, the most significant ones that are in here are really the interest on investment. So as you can see, if you look through here, I think we're doing an overall budget adjustment of almost $8 million between the funds to decrease the value of our investments. It's really a bookkeeping item, if you will. We are required to record our investments at fair market value. We intend to hold our investments until they mature. So if you think about like our bonds, when we, when we sold our bonds to people who bought them from us, when we sold them, people wanted our bonds, and we only sold them at an interest rate of 2%. So you think about today, people who hold our bonds, if they could buy a new investment, they're going to buy a bond at a higher interest rate. So our, the value of our bonds on the market are less. Doesn't mean we're not going to pay off our bonds. We're still going to be paying our bonds at $1 million plus the 2% interest. But the value of those today, if somebody wanted to buy those today, are not the same value that they were when we sold them a few years ago. So that's, that's what's happening to us today. I'm sure Treasurer Slavens would say as well, we aren't planning to sell our, any of our investments right now. We're planning to hold them to maturity. So this is really a bookkeeping item. So it looks kind of daunting and scary. At the end of the day, we will plan to hold our investments to maturity date and actually get the value of our investments for what we originally purchased them for. So I don't want that to scare anybody on the board right now that we're going to, you know, have this big loss. But it will look on our financial statements like we had a bigger loss on our investment income. So those are the, those are the biggest items, well, among all of the funds. The only other real large one on here is on the police fund on the expense side. We on the finance department did not record the pension contribution that the board, back a few years ago, when the DDA was no longer getting the capture from the police millage, we forgot, in the finance department, forgot to record that $600,000 additional to go into the pension contribution. So in order to fund that, we need to get that budget adjustment back in there so we can make that contribution. Otherwise, there's some minor adjustments. I'm happy to answer any specific questions, but those were the, the big ones that really I thought would stand out to the board.
Questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. Item G3, consider approval of upgrade to township firewalls.
Supervisor, I move to create a new purchase order to Sentinel Technologies of Livonia, Michigan, an amount not to exceed $332,000 and to approve any subsequent prepaid budget adjustments required to properly spread the costs over the life of the 36-month contract.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The township's current firewall was installed in 2017 and is no longer satisfactory to protect the township's networks and data against modern cyber threats. Additionally, the township is installing new high bandwidth internet service in January 2023, and the current firewall hardware is not capable of functioning at these higher levels of bandwidth. Also, just to let you know, so we did put in some requests to the MTA and MML and even our congresspeople to ask for GSA schedule to help us, help communities pay for this. Because even if we have firewalls, if the community next to us doesn't, they basically can act like a Trojan horse and let in a bad actor. So Victor is working on that. Victor, would you like to comment anything?
Just that the effort that we're making today on this is something that will help safeguard us for tomorrow. The fifth generation firewall that we're hoping to put in will greatly, greatly position us to be able to curb the recent trends that we're seeing in the threats analysis coming at us. Every single day, we receive probably over, within a given week, we receive over a million hits on separate nodes in the network. So we want to make sure that we have something that is capable enough to deal with those kind of stuff as opposed to what we have that has a danger of crumbling at some point. So, yeah, I think we're heading in the right direction.
Questions or comments? Stephen?
Just, thank you, Victor. What were the old firewalls manufacturer? Do you know?
Those are ASA Cisco's, old ASA Cisco generations. And they've since, they're no longer pushing even the, the updates to those. But, you know, we make it work so far.
In my professional life, these are the type of projects that I actually work on. And Palo Alto is everything that we're deploying as well. So it's good to see that you're on board with that. So.
Thank you.
Believe they're on the line, also, just to let you know. Kate?
Oh, they are?
Yeah, Palo Alto, what you said.
Oh, okay.
They heard you.
I just wanted to say if any residents want more information on this, we did have a good discussion around it at our study session. And it's, it's good that we're taking these steps. And also, Victor, I wanted to say that thank you for answering my question by email this afternoon.
And I know Victor is working on, they're basically educating our employees. And I think you were saying, somebody had mentioned that municipal employees, they pass through, you know, threats, not threats or hacking, at a rate of 15%, but Canton employees are at a 2%, correct? Is that?
That's correct. We're really excited about, you know, the Canton employees, they're doing real well. The 1% of us, they know themselves, but, you know.
Know who you are. Quit pressing on those links.
I accidentally flagged. I accidentally flagged an email from the Bureau of Elections thinking it was a spam. And I had to get IT to like unflag it so I could actually access the email. I was like so hypervigilant. Like, they change stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
Trying, Victor.
That's good.
But that's true, because we do.
We'll gladly correct that one. But the other type, if you flip it, we can't correct that one.
Right. And you do. We do get, you know, some that are tricks and, you know, it tells you if you passed.
Yeah.
I've never seen the past fail.
Oh, fail.
Are you part of the 2%?
I maybe.
Oh, no.
Tell him Palo Alto.
I do. I do. I only spend my life doing it.
I keep getting a link from a Boy Scout. He keeps saying, could you please put this link on your website? And he doesn't say anything else. I'm a local Boy Scout, but he won't answer questions.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah. It's like, I'm not touching your links.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider renewal of Civic Plus website hosting services and renewal of AudioEye website ADA services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order in the amount not to exceed $40,909.76 payable to Civic Plus Incorporated for a renewal of hosting services, website ADA services, software support, and maintenance services provided by Civic Plus covering a period of one year.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. ITI is requesting permission to renew our hosting services and support agreement with Civic Plus Incorporated, which expire on January 21, 2023. ITI is recommending extending the current contract for a period of one year with Civic Plus to continue the hosting services support and access to Civic Plus custom-designed web content management system. The cost for 2023 increased by $2,023.07, which is a standard 5% increase. Victor, do you want to comment on this?
I want to kind of put things in context here. This is just a renewal of everything that we have on the Civic Plus at the moment. And putting it in context, given that the communications evolution that was just presented before us called for major work on the website. So, you know, we have a year to do the refreshed job, but the refreshed job might not necessarily be the revamp that is just called for. So we have to put things in context. This is just to, you know, keep us afloat until we're able to do the kind of work that is called by the communication assessment.
Questions from the board? Comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G5, consider approval of the MDARD agreement for the 2022 Specialty Crop Block Grant.
Madam Supervisor, I move to accept the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development Specialty Block Grant Agreement in the amount of $19,410 for the purchase of 20 fruit trees and 25 fruit bushes to be planted in designated community gardens and to approve the attached 2023 budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Earlier this year, the Leisure Services Department applied for a grant through the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development for the purchase of fruit trees and bushes to be planted in community gardens throughout the township. Through this application, Canton has been awarded $19,410 for the purchase of 20 fruit trees and 25 fruit bushes to be used for community consumption and educational purposes. Leisure Services is recommending to accept the agreement between the Charter Township of Canton and the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development for the 2023 purchase of 20 fruit trees and 25 fruit bushes, bushes in the amount of $19,410. A 2023 budget amendment will be necessary. Due to the agreement deadline of November 9, I did sign the agreement prior to board approval. Would you like to comment, Greg?
Just that this is an exciting opportunity, something that we have wanted to put in one of our parks for quite some time, and funding has always been a challenge for us. So it's great that staff took the initiative to identify this grant. Jeanette Aiello, our projects and operations supervisor, really took the lead on this project. So we're certainly appreciative of her efforts and determination. This was quite a long process to get through. So thanks to her efforts for helping us through this process.
Questions or comments? Kate?
Yeah. So, reading through the documentation with this, I noticed that the intent is to have fruits available or, you know, that ripen from spring through fall. So I think that's great, that we're taking advantage of the whole growing season and trying to make sure we have something available, fresh, you know, whenever we can during that time. I was wondering if there's any kind of support that comes along with the grant and support from the state that will help.
No, nothing. Just for the initial purchase of this, and then we'll work with our farmer's market folks and our team of master gardeners that we, that are volunteers to help us keep the, and then our, obviously, our Parks Department will be working heavily on keeping these trees and bushes healthy.
Right. Yep.
Takes a lot to grow pineapples in Michigan, so.
Well, I noticed that it also comes with Mason Bee kits. So I think that's pretty interesting and exciting also.
So who, how would we, how would residents get the fruit from it?
A lot of patience, because these are going to be small trees.
That's right.
And small bushes.
In 30 years.
So we've got a little bit of time to plan that out, but it'll be through our farmer's market process. And then any, our farmer's market will distribute them there. We'll have some educational programs as well. And then any leftover of the produce, we would donate to a food bank or give to, like through our TFAT program and those sorts of things.
All those, so go ahead, Michael.
Where, I missed this. Where are we putting all of this stuff, just throughout the community?
The current plan is near the community gardens on the east side of Preservation Park on the Dog Park side.
Are any of them going to be cherry trees?
I've been forbidden from talking about the species because I say things like citrus trees and those sorts of things. And I am clearly not an arborist or farmer. So we have fantastic staff that will be helping to select what trees they are. So we have fantastic staff that will be helping to select what trees they are. And they're going to keep me far away from that process.
I think there's a list attached.
There was a list.
Was there a list?
Yeah.
I couldn't get past the term tree diaper. That bailed me off.
It's on that list, I think. The, the, the list including the tree diaper.
With your parenting skills, uh, we expect you to help us come change the diapers, Michael.
They have to be changed every three hours.
Oh, there is a list?
Yeah, there is.
Kiwi. Okay, interesting.
I see nectarine, but I don't see cherry.
Just because it's, it's Cherry Hill Village, cherry trees. Maybe next grant.
Fun fact, yes, Greg is known for calling them citrus trees at the LSAC committee.
Wait, was it you?
I'm told we can't grow citrus here.
No, it wasn't me.
His team, probably.
I think we all were.
Oh.
We thought it was funny.
But there is also a Mason Bee colony that will be used to insist in the pollinating processes for the crops. So they'll be secured in various trees. It's very cool.
I love that. That pollinator stuff is important.
Great. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G7, consider bid award for boardroom.
Uh, six.
Oh, G6, I'm sorry, I skipped it. G6, consider approval to purchase three solar light poles for Canton's parks.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the, um, the, uh, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of three solar light poles from Clear World LLC, 1613 Justin Road, mm, met, met, I don't speak French, Metierie, Metier, LA, Louisiana, 7001, uh, in the amount of $13,755 to be paid from the account number listed, capital outlay, land improvements, and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Canton Township strives to provide its residents with a safe and eco-friendly community. To continue these efforts, Canton Leisure Services staff is seeking approval to purchase three solar light poles from Clear World LLC, with two to be installed at Barchester Park and one at the summit on the park's east parking lot. Clear World's Retroflex is a sole provider of this patented product. Therefore, we are recommending to waive the bidding process and award the purchase from Clear World LLC for a total amount of $13,755. A budget amendment is necessary. Uh, Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
Yep. First, did you approve both motions on the last RBA? You did? Okay, I haven't, sure, okay.
I, 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 even though you guys write multiple motions, if you haven't noticed, I always read them all in one.
You combined it all into one. Okay, very good. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss that, the budget amendment portion, good. So these lights, I'm very excited about the opportunity to, um, test these lights out in a few of our locations. We're looking at putting, uh, two out in Barchester Park, where we've had resident complaints about, um, security and a lack of lighting at that park. And we don't have any power source out there. We've looked into bringing power there. It's expensive, and then the way it has to be billed is it has to go through the neighborhood. And then we'd have to reimburse them. It's kind of challenging. Um, and then we also have a spot on the east side of the summit between the summit and the parking lot. Many of our staff park on the east side. And in the early morning and evening, especially in the winter, uh, portion of the year, there's not great lighting and it can get a little slippery, so it's something that we've struggled with. Um, so we want to provide some lighting over there. And then these, these lights I ran into at a conference, and it seems like an exciting opportunity to do something different. And then we can, the intent is that if these poles, uh, work as well as advertised, we do have, uh, an opportunity to return them if we're not happy with them. But if they work as well as advertised, we'll look to, um, integrate these types of poles into future park designs, such as Ridge Road Park. Instead of, uh, running the electric throughout the park, we would, uh, potentially utilize something like this so that we can lower our installation costs and then obviously have good effects on the environment.
Victor did add that you be, um, he asked you to pull extra conduit also for any expansion in broadband across the parks.
No, that's with a different project, because we're not adding any conduit with these.
Comments from the board? Kate?
Um, so I noticed that, um, these are going to sort of serve as a pilot, um, for us to see how they work out. At what point will you evaluate, like, a year or longer?
Well, probably within, uh, three to six months, we'll know, um, fairly well, uh, because we will be installing them in the winter season, which is going to be the most challenging for any solar light. So if they work well, um, during the winter season and then continue through spring, we'll know that they're working, meeting our needs.
And do we know if there's any, um, maintenance or upkeep needed for these?
Very little. Um, they're pretty much maintenance-free. You don't have to clean the solar panels. They're coated with those. Um, really, the only thing that we would need to do once they're in is monitor the lighting. And if we, it, it's fairly easy to control the brightness of them. You can control them with an app on your phone. Um, so if we have any issues in the neighborhoods where it's too bright, um, for any of the neighboring homes, we can go out there and dial it back from, say, 80% brightness to 50% brightness, just remotely. So that's basically all the maintenance that we'll have to do. The batteries are warranted for 10 years, so those should be good. Um, the, the full pole is warranted for 10 years, and then the solar panels are warranted for 25 years.
Steven?
Um, will you, um, evaluate the cost of these versus the cost of a standard pole? And how much electricity these are saving us, so you can see? I'm not saying it has to be the full reason, but.
Yeah, it'll be difficult to compare and contrast, like, for these new poles, because we're not paying any electric there, so we can't say that we're saving.
But do they cost more, so therefore, per pole?
Right, yeah, we can look at the install cost for traditional lights and those sorts of things. We know that, um, at Barchester Park, we looked, we got quotes for installing lights, and this is cheaper than to, we would have had to bore the electric under the road to bring that across to, um, put these poles in. So it would have cost us more just for the initial install of the, um, an on-grid type light, so just the, and then we won't have any ongoing costs, uh, for the next 10 years. And then we would, um, potentially after 10 to 12 years, need to replace the battery, which right now, they're, they are lithium bi- batteries. Um, right now, those batteries are about $600 per pole, um, which seems fairly reasonable to me. But 10 years from now, I would expect those lithium batteries to be significantly cheaper as well.
And I'll just add, um, for the board's consideration, we're meeting next week to talk about, um, implementing proposal two. One of the interesting parts of the election reforms is we are going to be required to have probably an additional five to six drop boxes equitably distributed throughout the community. Uh, and they are going to be required to be under camera and probably be lighted to be worked 24/7, so we might be looking at something similar, um, for that. Uh, but I'm meeting with facilities and a couple of other folks to talk about how we're going to go about doing that. And we're talking, we're meeting next week, so.
Poles, these poles do have an option of, you can have an integrated security camera mounted on the top. So that's something that they would be able to accomplish.
Great, all right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G7, consider bid award for boardroom audio/video equipment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award the bid for the audio/video equipment upgrades to Smart Homes and Smart Offices Incorporated at 20 State Street, Mason, Michigan, 48854, in the amount of $24,537.59, with funds to be paid from the account number listed, Capital Outlay Computers and Equipment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In November of 2022, an invitation to bid was solicited for the upgrade and installation of audio/video equipment for the township boardroom. From this solicitation, four companies submitted bids for the specific equipment requested. Sound Planning Communication at $31,659, CDWG at $27,129, Conference Technologies Incorporated at $25,451, and Smart Homes and Smart Offices Incorporated at $24,537.59. Canton Leisure Services is recommending the approval of audio/video equipment and installation from Smart Homes and Smart Offices Incorporated in the amount of $24,537.59. Uh, Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
I wish we had done this one board meeting ago, so we didn't run into the issues earlier this evening. But that will certainly upgrade, this will upgrade a lot of our equipment so that we will avoid, uh, some of the issues that we ran into tonight.
Questions or comments? Okay.
Talking a lot, um, this evening. I just want to, um, let the community know that this, you know, this is for this room, but we're not here all the time. But there are other groups and other, um, you know, residents, um, some of our, um, state representatives or county commissioners, um, they all use this room. So it's not just for us. It's for the community. Um, in fact, community members can, can use this room too, if you, if you have something that, um, you want to do here. So it, it's not just for us, um, but it's for the community. And, uh, yeah, as we saw this evening, we, we need a little help in here.
That's true. Th- this room is a very popular room. And even the Canton Community Foundation uses it for its, some of its programming, so a lot of people use this room. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G8, consider approving a three-month extension to the embedded social worker contract with Higera Health Incorporated.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a three-month extension to the embedded social worker contract with Higera Health Incorporated.
For it. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by trustee Snyderman. The police department is requesting a three-month extension on its contract with Higera Health Incorporated for embedded social worker services. Higera has agreed to this extension with the existing terms and conditions of the agreement. Uh, Director Bow, do you want to add anything?
Uh, thank you for the consideration. This program has been successful. We're looking to put out a bid on the pilot program that we've started back in March of 2021. Higera just brought on a new, uh, social worker, and just for context, uh, they were out tonight co-responsing with a, uh, someone experiencing a, a major issue actually on township property. So we're seeing some good responses, uh, with their, the new employee that's working for them.
Questions or comments?
Just on what you just said, uh, is this the second, um, additional one that we added, or?
Uh, the first one's on leave. Uh, this one is a replacement.
But we didn't, we did not add a second one?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay.
Expecting, uh, RFP to see a proposal from multiple vendors, or maybe the same vendor that, uh, meets the expectations of the township.
Favor the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G9, consider request for Interstate Security to install post-construction security card readers in public safety building.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase and installation of post-construction security card readers in the public safety building by Interstate Security in the amount of $12,565 using, utilizing drug forfeiture funds for this expenditure, expense.
Point. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The police department is requesting approval for Interstate Security, the township's current contracted vendor, to install and/or connect post-construction security card readers to the renovated areas in the public safety building. As planned, some of the hardwire and wiring is being reconnected, while other areas are new or relocated installations. The total cost of this project is $12,565. Um, Director Bow, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, but I'll take questions.
Questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G10, consider approval of a one-year service agreement for the Motorola radio and dispatch console equipment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the 2023 purchase of a Motorola Solutions one-year service agreement for the Motorola radio and dispatch console equipment in the amount of $33,568.
For it. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by trustee Brininsky. The police department is requesting to purchase a one-year service agreement with Motorola Solutions for coverage of the 800 megahertz Motorola dispatch radio and E911 console components for 2023 in the amount of $35,937. Director Bow, do you want to add anything?
Questions?
Questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G11, authorize the supervisor to sign a three-year agreement to keep Schiffman Fornier a special labor council for Canton Township.
I like to make you, leave you a suspense. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve authorizing the supervisor to sign a three-year co- uh, agreement with Schiffman Fornier uh, to con- uh, continue in the role of special labor council for Canton Township.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Schiffman Fornier has offered a retainer agreement for labor and employee services for a flat monthly fee. This agreement would be for a period of three years for a sum of $6,000 per month, and 2023 for a total of $72,000. This fee would be scheduled to increase on the following scale. 2024, $75,000 annually or $6,250 per month. 2025, $78,000 or $6,500 per month. Let's see, Deputy Supervisor, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, just to say that, uh, we've, uh, had a real good experience thus far with Schiffman Fornier. They bring a great deal of expertise in labor and employment, uh, matters to Canton Township. Um, they've, um, been, uh, successful, um, in a number of, um, labor issues that they've negotiated on behalf of the township, employment issues that come up on a daily basis. And, uh, in addition to, you know, retaining their expertise in labor and employment law matters, uh, this retainer agreement also fixes the cost, uh, of the agreement for the township over a three-year period. Uh, right now, we pay, pay an hourly rate, so the cost is variable and can sometimes be unpredictable based on, uh, the amount of work the township has, uh, for Schiffman Fornier. Uh, this agreement, um, will create more predictability in that regard.
Any questions or comments from the board? Kate?
Um, yes, so the agreement is for three years. If for any reason we, um, aren't satisfied, is there an out for us, or?
Yes, we could, um, terminate the agreement with 30 days' notice to, um, the law firm.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Um, any public comment in the room? I only see one person. Let me look for attendees. Any public comment? If you want to raise your hand, public comment, public comment, no public comment. Okay, how about staff comment? Anybody want to talk about events or anything coming up, or holidays? We have Director Stockline on and Director Smith on. You guys have any comments on anything?
I can tell you, um, we had to shop with a firefighter last week.
Oh, yes.
That went very well, and, um, I believe that those kids are going to have a great Christmas because of the firefighter's work, uh, putting in for that. Um, other than that, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, everybody. Uh, I know this is our last board meeting, so enjoy the holidays. Sorry I couldn't be at the meeting tonight.
Thank you. Director Smith, you have anything?
Uh, no, nothing really to add, other than, uh, Happy Holidays to everybody, as this is our last meeting of the year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's start with board comments. Summer? Okay, let's start with board comments. Summer?
Um, I don't really have anything, but Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. Look forward to seeing everyone in twenty twenty-three, and hope you all are able to get some rest and relax over the holiday season.
Michael, did you have anything?
I'll echo that. Um, Happy Holidays to everybody, this being our last time uh, seeing each other at the board meeting. In twenty twenty-two, I look forward to a new year. And on top of that, I just wanted to uh, thank you all. For your support, specifically over the last two years. An incident occurred and was reported on last week in the city of Livonia. Where um, not only did uh, ex-state Senator Patrick Colback um, attempt to pressure the clerk there. Into giving up access illegally uh, to election equipment. Four days before the January sixth vote to certify the election. But it appears as though one of the city council people was also involved. And nobody on this board has ever attempted to apply any undue pressure on me. And I, and I'm appreciative of that. It's extremely inappropriate, probably a misuse of the position. And um, I wasn't here uh, at the board meeting where former state senator Patrick Colback came and spoke. Unfortunately, I, I do appreciate that this body denied the FOIA request. That was ruled by the state of Michigan to not be in compliance with law. So I'm, I'm very grateful for that, that backing. It's very important that um, those systems stay in the hands of election officials only. And are never compromised by individuals. So you, you, you all played your part and, and, and you served the, the community. And then um, when, when the former state senator came and, and he spoke about our systems. Uh, I appreciate um, specifically Trustee Foster's words um, about the inappropriateness of those comments. And the aspersions put on the elections system. And it, it's all more in context now, as what happened in Livonia came out uh, to light last week. So I am very grateful for that. You know, statements were made about the security features that were inaccurate. And um, and so it's been hard, it's been frustrating, it's difficult for election officials to kind of exist. And when you read the communications report that Prophetless did, they actually have a, a specific part in there about the impact to. Elections and election officials and what's occurred over the last two years, um, and public trust. And individuals who have tried to compromise those systems have played a role in eroding that trust. So um, I just wanted to speak on that because I think it's important. Uh, because there are two documented cases where communities were attempted. And it was both us and then what just happened in Livonia. And I think it puts in, into historic context, the vote that you all did to deny that FOIA. So um, should be proud um, of the work you did to secure the election, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not much, except for to say Happy Holidays to everyone, Merry Christmas, and um. Looking forward to a little rest and relaxation, and I will see you all in the new year, if not before.
Ben?
Thank you. Um, you mentioned that, you both mentioned actually, that other organizations use this room. And Madam Supervisor, you men- mentioned the Canton Foundation. And the foundation is part of the Local Impact Alliance, which includes also the Westland Foundation and the Plymouth Foundation. Women's Giving Circle, the Porch Program, uh, and a few other organizations. And yeah, um, the foundation tomorrow, the alliance tomorrow will be having uh, lunch and learn. I'm sure it's too late for people watching this. I don't know if this will be broadcast before tomorrow's lunch. But they're always taped and they can be watched on um, localimpactalliance.org um, on uh, on replay on YouTube. And um, tomorrow's uh, lunch and learn is about preventing elder fraud. One in five people age sixty-five or older is a victim of elder fraud in our nation. And um, it has cost citizens over thirty-six billion dollars uh, each year. So that is uh, tomorrow's lunch and learn. Um, each month, there is a lunch and learn. Usually, as we've said, in this room, um, we are expanding to those other communities as well. So we'll be having lunch and learns in those communities. And there are other, um, there are other um, events for the Local Impact Alliance. So I urge people out there to go to localimpactalliance.org um, and learn all about them. And with that, just Happy Holidays to everyone. Thank you to uh, the directors and their, all their teams for what they do uh, every day, so thank you.
Thank you. When it, where is that one going to be? It's just a call?
It is here.
Oh, it's in here, okay.
It's here tomorrow at lunch, if anybody wants to come down and hear about it from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty. And yeah, so.
You, Diane?
I just, I'll be real quick too. Um, uh, Happy Holidays to everybody. And um, I'm really proud of what we've all accomplished the last two years, bravo. And thank you to all the directors and your staff. We couldn't have done everything we've done without you and your support, so, you know, bravo to you and thank you so much. Also, um, everybody enjoy their families and friends this holiday. I know we've enjoyed going on the walks in the back, uh, the lighted walks. And I know when my children come home this uh, Christmas, we'll be doing that. With not only Mark and myself, but um, the kids and everybody's dogs. And so we'll have a, a good time, and I hope the rest of the residents are able to enjoy the light show. Thank you.
Thank you, you're right. Actually, um, Director Homberger was talking about that earlier. He says that the staff, they have to shut it down, I think at ten o'clock. Is that when it shuts down? And there's always people in the, in the park?
Eight thirty.
Oh, eight thirty, I'm sorry. And don't go at ten. The lights will be off. Don't show up. It will be dark. But people are always there, so you always have to wait because people are enjoying it. It's very nice. Nice, nice walk.
Deputy Director LaFever was there last Saturday, turning them off, and he waited around for about a half hour.
They kept coming? It's a lot of fun, and it's free. A couple of us went on a tour of the landfill here in Canton, Sawkill's Trail. And so basically, um, it's filling fast, so we again asked the residents to please recycle. I mean, that's important, so it doesn't fill up our landfill so fast, so please look at your composting and your recycling. I know our composting program is starting, I think in December now. It was supposed to start in um, yeah, we're going to be picking up our buckets in December. I don't know if people can still sign up. No? Okay.
Nope, not anymore, but.
Okay, sorry.
We'll see how it goes, though.
Yes.
We're going to be monitoring it.
Yes. So please recycle. Another thing is, a press release went out. I think it's also in the, is it in the focus about the sick trees we're replacing? Some of the trees are removing?
Yep, it's in there, yep. About the pear trees, yeah.
So don't panic, you know, trees have a lifespan. Not all trees last hundreds of years. Some of our smaller ones don't. So we're, we're going to be removing some of the sick ones and doing some replacements around that. But then, like Treasurer Slavens said, thank you to the staff and, and the board for all their hard work this year. It's going to be a fun year, fun next year. And also, I'm just to let you know, I um, I am involved. Canton Fifty-Five Plus is having a swing band holiday party this Thursday at lunchtime. And I'm going to be there. I don't know if anyone else, I think Treasurer Slavens is, and so. So it's going to be a lot of fun if anybody wants to join still. But thank you, everybody. Have a great holidays. Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, Christmas. Did I miss any? Did I miss any holidays? In December? No, okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Have a great day. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Means adjourn. Thank you.